Good evening. We'd like to welcome everyone here to the City of Palaca, January fourteenth, two thousand twenty-one, City of Palaca Commission Meeting. At this time, we're gonna have our Pledge of Allegiance. I'm gonna ask our newly-elected Commissioner Will Jones to lead us in the pledge, and Pastor Alonzo Mulberry to lead us in the invocation. Everyone, please stand at this time.
Amen. While we're standing, Father, we thank you once again for this day. Thank you for how good you've been towards us all day long. Thank you because you stayed our lives, you allowed us to live again, and we say, "Thank you." We pray, God, that you will look on this meeting tonight as we assemble together. We've come in your name, come to do the business of the city. We pray that the wisdom of God will be upon the heads of these leaders. God, that you would give them how to do what, and what to do when. We pray, God, that your will be done, your kingdom come, and your glory be revealed. Blessed are, I pray in Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you, Pastor Mulberry. Roll call, please.
God bless you.
Here.
Commissioner McCaskill.
Here.
Commissioner James.
Commissioner Borum.
Present.
Commissioner Campbell.
Present.
That concludes roll call.
All members are present, and we have a quorum presence in the room, and commissioners who are appearing virtually. At this time, I'd also go to item number two of the agenda, which is Approval of Minutes. Actually, before we go to Approval of Minutes for the December, for our December tenth meeting, and also our January fourth meeting under item B. So I'll entertain a motion at this time.
Make a motion.
Motion that said the minutes is written.
A second. It's motion on the floor in a second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Moving on to number three on the agenda, which is our Public Recognitions and Presentations. First up, under item A, our Martin Luther King Junior, our Dr. Martin Luther King Junior Day Celebration for January the eighteenth, two thousand twenty-one. And for our MLK Celebration, we've got President Kathy Wright, African-American Cultural Arts Council, who's with us.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Evening.
The proclamation reads as follows.
Whereas the Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Junior devoted his life to advancing equality, social justice, and opportunity for all, and challenged all Americans to participate in the never-ending work of building a more perfect union through his teachings, which continue to guide and inspire us. And whereas Dr. King advanced the cause of civil rights throughout the South in spite of the dangers associated with his work. Locally, while taking part in the St. Augustine Civil Rights Movement, Dr. King was arrested on June the eleventh, nineteen sixty-four, on the steps of the Monson Motel Restaurant. His famous letter from the St. Augustine Jail to his friend Rabbi Israel Dresner, urging him to recruit rabbis to come to St. Augustine, resulted in the largest mass arrest of rabbis in American history on June eighteenth, nineteen sixty-four, at the Monson Motel. And whereas, on the eve of his death, Dr. King said, "We have an opportunity to make America a better nation. I may not get there with you, but I want you to know tonight that we, as a people, will get to the promised land." Though we have made great strides since the turbulent era of Dr. King's movement, his work and our journey remain unfinished. And whereas, recognizing that our nation has yet to reach Dr. King's promised land is not an admission of defeat, but a call to action during these challenging times as our capacity to support each other remains limitless to make our communities better with increased opportunity for all of our citizens by carrying on Dr. King's work, by breaking the cycle of poverty and reinvesting in our schools. Because education unlocks the child's potential and remains our strongest weapon against injustice and inequality. And whereas, Dr. King, whose message transcends national borders, devoted his life to serving others. So as we observe the Dr. King Day on January eighteenth, let us ask ourselves, what Dr. King believed to be his life's most urgent and persistent question: What are you doing for others? By lifting up our brothers and sisters through dedication and service, we honor Dr. King's memory and reaffirm our common humanity. Now, therefore, Terrell Hill, Mayor of the City of Palaca, Florida, together with the members of the Palaca City Commission, proclaim January eighteenth, two thousand twenty-one, as Dr. Martin Luther King Junior Day in Palaca, and call upon our cities, citizens, to pay tribute to the life and works of Dr. Martin Luther King Junior and witness thereof. I have hereunto set my hand unto witness and cause the seal of the city of Palaca to be affirmed on the fourth day of January in the year of our Lord, on the fourteenth day of January in the year of our Lord, two thousand and twenty-one.
I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion on the floor, it's a second by Commissioner Jones, actually. And is there any unreadiness on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Let's give a round of applause for MLK Proclamation. President Wright, do you have anything for us today?
Um, I just want to thank our, to the City Commission, to all those who are in attendance tonight. I thank you so much to all our supporters of the dream of Dr. Martin Luther King, and for all that he stood for. We just give our sincere gratitude for everything that you all have done to recognize this day. And although this year will look a little different for a lot of us, we still want to remember that day, celebrate that day, and continue the fight for progress. Thank you so very much.
Thank you. Can you give us some information about the virtual MLK Celebration?
No, sir. Unfortunately, we were not able to pull that off this year. So we are hoping that others will look within our surrounding counties and to look for something virtual that they can participate in.
And we definitely thank, we definitely thank African-American Cultural Arts Council for the work that it does in the community, and trying to make sure that we unify the community, especially during these trying times.
Thank you.
Yeah, be with you. So, we just, again, if we look at the work and the life of Dr. Martin Luther King, particularly looking at what's going on in America today where we find ourselves divided, we will understand exactly why it is important for all of us to stand together in unity. And so, we encourage all of our citizens on this holiday weekend to make sure that we make significant efforts to stand in unity as this country stands divided. So again, thank you very much. Next up is going to be our proclamation for Arbor Day. Ms. Krantz.
Thank you, Mayor.
And for our Arbor Day proclamation, I have Ms. Melissa Miller from St. John's River State with us. Counselor, are you with us?
Sir. I'm sorry, I was muted. I am with you, Ms. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you for being here.
Whereas Arbor Day is observed throughout the nation and the world in recognition of the many benefits of trees. And whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce life-giving oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife. And whereas, trees are a renewable source, giving us paper, wood, for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products. And whereas trees in our city increase property values and enhance economic vitality of business areas and beautify our community. And whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. And whereas, the City of Palaca has proudly been recognized by the Arbor Day Foundation as a Tree City USA for the past twenty-nine years. Now, therefore, he, Mayor Terrell Hill, Mayor of the City of Palaca, has hereby proclaimed January fifteenth, two thousand twenty-one, as Arbor Day in the City of Palaca. And he urges all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day by supporting efforts to protect our trees and woodlands. And further, he urges all citizens to plant trees to gladden the heart and promote the well-being of this and future generations. Thank you, Mayor.
Entertainer motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
This is a motion by Commissioner McCaskill, a second by Commissioner Campbell. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Attorney Miller.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would just like to thank you, the City Commission, and the city staff for your leadership with Tree Camp, with Tree City USA efforts. St. John's River State College is also an Arbor Day supporter and is a tree campus. And we have been a tree campus for, USA campus for several years. We definitely appreciate the partnership that we have with the city, and we appreciate the fact that you have contributed a tree, which will be planted on our campus tomorrow in honor of Arbor Day. And we look forward to many years in the future to celebrate Arbor Day together. And hopefully, we'll be able to do that without the COVID limitations sometime soon. And I'd also like to thank the City Commission for your efforts in keeping us all safe and being leaders among us in this effort. So thank you for that, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. And again, thank you to St. John's River State College for your commitment and your commitment for hosting us on Arbor Day, and your commitment to this community as a whole, and send our regards to President Pickens.
We'll do that. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next up, National Slavery and Human Trafficking Prevention Month, January two thousand twenty-one. We have Ms. Lakeisha Mack from CDS Behavioral. Ms. Mack, are you with us?
Yes, Ms. Mayor, I am with you.
Thank you. And the proclamation reads as follows.
Whereas nearly a century and a half ago, President Abraham Lincoln issued the Emancipation Proclamation, a document that reaffirmed the noble goals of equality and freedom for all that lie at the heart of what it means to live in America. In the years since, we have tirelessly pursued the realization and protection of these essential principles. And whereas, despite our success, thousands of individuals living in the United States and still more abroad suffer in silence under the intolerable yoke of modern slavery. During National Slavery and Human Trafficking Prevention Month, we stand with all of those who are held in compelled service. We recognize the people, organizations, and government entities that are working to combat human trafficking. And we recommit to bringing an end to this inexcusable human rights abuse. And whereas, human trafficking is a thirty-two billion dollar per year global criminal enterprise, and this crime as well as a civil and human rights violation, and an estimated twenty-five million people are currently victims of human trafficking for both sex and labor. And whereas, human trafficking endangers the lives of millions of people around the world, and it is a crime that knows no borders. Human trafficking is a form of modern-day slavery, be it for commercial, sexual, or labor exploitation. The otherwise multi-layered crime does not have a static profile. It affects children, adults, US citizens, residents, and foreign nationals alike. And whereas, this month, we do not simply reflect on this appalling reality. We also pledge to do all in our power to end the horrific tragedies of human trafficking that plagues victims around the world and in our neighborhoods. Whereas, human trafficking awareness is observed to educate the public and raise awareness about human trafficking as a strong commitment to social justice. Now, therefore, he, Terrell Hill, Mayor of the City of Palaca, together with the members of the Palaca City Commission, do hereby endorse the month of January two thousand twenty-one as National Slavery and Human Trafficking Prevention Month in the City of Palaca, and urge all citizens to educate themselves about all forms of modern slavery and the signs and consequences of human trafficking. Thank you.
So moved.
There's a motion on the floor by Commissioner Borum.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Jones. Any further discussion or any favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion. Give a round of applause as Ms. Mack gives us some information from CDS.
I'm sorry, I couldn't, I couldn't hear. It's kind of low. I'm sorry, I can't, I can't hear. Can you speak up just a little bit louder?
Ms. Mack, do you have comments for us?
Yes, we also have joining us Michelle Garner with the Juvenile Crime Prevention Office, Cindy Starling, the Regional Director of CDS Family and Behavioral Services, and also Kristy Gillis, the current Chair for the Freedom Seven Human Trafficking Task Force. They're all online with us to help me accept this wonderful award. Thank you.
And so again, we definitely thank you. Human trafficking is something, and I think many people within our country are oblivious to. And I think that overall, we need to bring more awareness to the existence of human trafficking, how it's contrary to the Thirteenth Amendment, and begin to really educate our community, because it's right here in our back door, and many of us have no idea that it exists. And we find ourselves with many, with many citizens being left in very perilous conditions. Thank you.
Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
My name's Kristy Gillis, I'm the Community Development Administrator and the Chair of the Freedom Seven Human Trafficking Task Force. And I just wanted to make everyone aware, we do offer free education and trainings. We have our task force as a training scheduled next month, or this month on the twenty-first, with investigation and prosecuting of trafficking victims. We also just want to make everyone aware that there's an increase with online recruiting as well. Florida Department of Children and Families investigates trafficking. And in two thousand eighteen-nineteen, in Putnam County, there were eleven reports of human trafficking that were called into the DCF hotline, with one of those being verified. And then last year, in two thousand nineteen-twenty, there were eleven cases, again, reported to the, to the Department of Children and Families with four of those individuals that were verified as, as human trafficking victims. So again, these are, are our kids and our community. But we would be happy to assist and do any education and training, and we do appreciate the ongoing support from the City of Palaca Mayor, as well as Commissioners.
And we would love for you to be able to share that information with us so that we can put it on our, our social media sites as well, get it out to the citizens, and find a way to actually share your training virtually with other, others within the community. So.
Okay, I, I can get in contact with the city and get that arranged.
Thank you very much, and thank you for all the work that you do. Next up, School Choice Week, January twenty-fourth through January thirtieth. And for our School Choice proclamation, we have Mr. Curtis Ellis, Principal of Putnam Academy of Arts and Sciences. Ellis, are you with us today?
I'm here. Good evening.
How are you, sir?
Doing well.
The proclamation reads as follows.
Whereas, we believe that all children in the City of Palaca should have access to the highest quality education possible. And whereas, the City of Palaca recognizes the important role that an effective education plays in preparing all students to be successful adults. And whereas, quality education is critically important to the economic vitality of the City of Palaca. And whereas, the City of Palaca is home to a multitude of high-quality public charter and non-public schools from which parents can choose for their children, in addition to families who choose to educate their children in the home. And whereas, educational variety not only helps to diversify our economy, but also enhances the vibrancy of our community. And whereas, the City of Palaca has many high-quality teaching professionals in all types of school settings who are committed to educating our children amidst the pandemic. And whereas, School Choice Week is celebrated across the country by millions of students, parents, educators, schools, and organizations to raise awareness of their need for effective educational options. Now, therefore, Terrell Hill, Mayor of the City of Palaca, Florida, do hereby endorse the week of January twenty-fourth through January thirtieth, two thousand twenty-one, as School Choice Week in the City of Palaca. And I call this order observance to the attention of all citizens of the City of Palaca and witness whereof, he, the mayor, have hereunto set his hand and caused to be affixed the seal of the City of Palaca, Florida, Florida, on this fourteenth day of January in the year of our Lord, two thousand twenty-one. So moved.
Second.
Aye.
Aye.
Moving on to Mr. Principal Curtis. Principal Curtis Ellis, you have any comments for us, sir? Principal, Principal Ellis, you have any comments for us?
Yes, sir. I just want to say thank you to the Commission for recognizing School Choice Week. You know, some students thrive in regular public schools, some in charter, some in private, some in magnet, some in homeschool. But regardless of the school, we're all in, have the same goal. And that goal is providing the best education possible to the children of Palaca and Putnam County. And we just thank you for recognizing School Choice Week.
Thank you very much, and thank you again for your work with our young people in this community.
Thank you.
Next up is our, the City of Palaca, Florida, the City of Palaca continues to celebrate the life and the legacy of Ms. Deborah Foster. We have her family with us today, and we've got Jessica Solomon, who's, who's joining us. Do we have any other family members who are present?
Kim and Bobby Daly. We have Kim and Bobby Daly.
I got Kim and, I got Kim and Bobby Daly on here as well. And so, before we get started, I want to have a moment of silence for Ms. Foster. And so, will everyone please bow their head and join me in a moment of silence? Thank you. Proclamation reads as follows. Whereas, on behalf of our community, we wish to extend our sincere condolences over the passing of Deborah Foster on January second, two thousand twenty-one. And whereas, Ms. Foster was employed by the city as a front desk records clerk for the Palaca Police Department in October, two thousand fifteen, serving in that role for over five years. And whereas, Ms. Foster received the Unit of the Year Certificate for the Support Services Unit in two thousand nineteen. And whereas, Ms. Foster earned the respect, admiration, and high regard of all with whom she came in contact, and our community has sustained a great loss in her death. Now, therefore, I, Terrell Hill, Mayor of the City of Palaca, Florida, together with the members of the Palaca City Commission, in recognition of Ms. Foster's dedication to the Palaca Police Department, to hereby express our deep appreciation for her service to the community and extend to her family our sincere sympathy upon her passing. Witness whereof, hereunto set my hand and caused to be affixed the seal of the City of Palaca, Florida, on this fourteenth day of January in the year of our Lord, two thousand twenty-one. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
There's a motion on the floor by Commissioner Borum. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner McCaskill. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Let's give a round of applause for Ms. Deborah Foster. Chief Shaw, you, Chief Shaw, are you with me? Chief Shaw's here in the audience. Chief, if you could come forward at this time. Also, is there anyone from the family who wants to make any comments?
I just want to say thank you. I want to say thank you for everything. For everything. I also have her Aunt Mabel and Uncle Robert.
Hello, Aunt Mabel.
We appreciate everything you guys have done.
We are, we've got an opportunity to see that smile that lights up a room and that undying commitment to making it happen. And so, we were, we're definitely grateful to have Ms. Foster in our lives. Here at the City of Palaca, she'll be forever missed and forever treasured. And Chief Shaw's here as well. I know Chief Shaw has some expressions at this time. Chief, you want to say anything to the family?
Yes, sir. On behalf of the City of Palaca, Palaca Police Department, we want to say thank you to the family for allowing us to share such a wonderful time and experience and, and get to know Deborah. Deborah was very special to us at the Police Department, and special to us at the city. And we are very, very saddened by her loss. But we do extend our deepest sympathy to the family, and we do say thank you for allowing us to spend such a great time with her.
Thank you. Do we have any comments from the Commission or for anyone on the staff at this time?
Well, I'd just like to extend the deepest sympathy, sympathy to the Foster family. Again, it shows her dedication and commitment and what she did for our community as a whole. And again, we can't find many people that have those type characteristics or what have you, and how many people she has touched. And so, again, we'd like to thank the family for allowing us to have her for the time that she served the city. So thank y'all very much.
Commissioner Campbell, Mr. Campbell, you're muted.
Uh, yeah, I'm sorry. I too would like to extend my sincere condolences to the family. There was always a smile when you walked into the Police Department, and that's going to be definitely missed. So during these difficult times, again, we are with you in prayer.
Commissioner Will Jones, our thoughts and prayers are with you and your family at this time. And so, we, again, I, I think the greatest testament that we had, and the greatest, just the words that came from Ms. Catherine Austin kind of summed everything up at the memorial service as to just how dedicated Ms. Foster was as a person, how her work at the hospital, and Bennys, not Denny's, created just, just a wonderful atmosphere and a system of commitment. And so, we just want to thank the family again for loaning her to us for a few moments. Thank you. Next up, we'll go to item number four on the agenda, which is our public comment. Public comments will be limited to two minutes. No action will be taken on topics of discussion. If there's anyone here wishing to speak during public comment, you have the ability to dial three eight six three two nine zero one hundred, extension zero. You can also put your comment in the YouTube chat. So at this time, there's anyone here for public comment, we'll open the floor for public comment. Do we have anything in the chat?
There's nothing in the chat this time here.
Seeing nothing, seeing the phone's not lit up, we will go ahead and close public comment. Moving on to our consent agenda, item number five. We have items A through H on the consent agenda. Are there any items on consent that you wish to have removed at this time? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
So, so there's a motion by Commissioner Borum, there's a second by Commissioner McCaskill. Is there any further discussion? Yes, sir. Yes, we, we got one, we got a discussion item, Commissioner Jones.
On item E, Resolution Number Two thousand twenty-one, R. that zero six, authorizing, uh, two hundred grand. And that's, uh, reference to the Hink Brown Park Improvement, Phase Two. My question is, uh, I saw it happen, but I haven't seen anything including restroom facility at the park. Is that included in the redevelopment down there and the improvement?
So, Mr. Griffith or Ms. Tucker, do you want to take that question? I can't see who's participating, so are they?
I'm sorry, I'm here. That question was awfully.
The question, the question was, is there, were restroom facilities and. The question, the question was, is there, were restroom facilities included in this phase of the FEDAP grant?
Um, in that FEDAP application, no, they were not included. We're, um, staff is currently exploring other funding opportunities for restrooms at Hank Brian.
So, so to clarify my question maybe would be, are bathrooms in the near future plans for the improvement down there to be included? Yes, I, I, I'll answer that for you, yes. So I know that we've worked on getting some quotes for restroom facilities in there, actually looking for some additional funding sources. And so it's necessary, it's, it's been something that should have been done forty years ago.
All right, thank you. That's, that's the only question.
Anything else, Commissioner?
Well, Mayor, I have something.
Yes, sir.
Uh, when we, when we have projects like that, is there any way that we can get, um, what those improvements will be and kind of have a somewhat of an outline that we can kind of understand and know so we wouldn't have to raise certain questions like, that was a basic one, but it was very critical that we, we do have bathrooms. So I thank Commissioner, uh, Jones for bringing that, uh, bringing that up. So if we can just have a more of an outline as the, at least a high level outline that'll kind of help us out.
Okay, just get with, um, Mr. Griffith and Ms. Tucker, and then they can kind of give you scopes.
Appreciate, thanks, sir.
You're welcome. Seeing, seeing nothing else, we'll call the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Moving on to item number six, Palaka Housing Authority appointment. We've got two applicants for this position. Uh, is Mr. John Nelson on the line? We've got Mr. John Nelson, and we also have Dr. Sharon Spels. So is, uh, Mr. Nelson on the line with us?
I think I am.
All right, so it, since I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna act like you are anyway. So, Mr. Nelson, you want to go ahead and, uh, give us a quick synopsis? We, we all know you as the former CEO of the Housing Authority. And so do you want to give us some, some information at this point?
Uh, yes, can, first of all, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Um, as you know, I have been the CEO of the Palaka Housing Authority for roughly fourteen, fifteen years. Um, and I think that the Housing Authority, you know, did very well during that time period. More so than that, uh, the experience that I bring to the table, um, and want to bring to the board is that of over fifty years of housing and housing development. I'd like to be able to share with the other board members and move the Housing Authority in a direction that will benefit the city of Palaka. Uh, I've been on various committees, uh, national committees, uh, as well as local. And I think that the experience, again, that I bring to the table is very, very important to allow the other board members, uh, to be able to get another picture of what the Housing Authority is capable of doing.
Yeah. Thank you. Any questions or any comments from Mr. Nelson? Next up, Dr. Sharon Spels. Dr. Spels, can you hear me? I know they said that my volume is a little low.
Yes, sir, I can hear you.
You want to go ahead and give us a presentation or give us, give us some comments as, as to why we should select you for the vacancy on the board?
Yes, sir. Um, I would just truly like to carry on the legacy of my mother, Mrs. Annie M. Spell, um, that was a previous board member, and just become an asset, asset to those in the Palaka Housing Authority community. Um, that's basically it.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, any comments from the commission or any questions?
Yes, sir. I would like to have a comment.
Commissioner Jones, go ahead.
Uh, I've had the pleasure of serving on the Housing Authority Board, uh, as a commissioner, and previously as a chair of that board. I worked with, uh, John Nelson previously, uh, as he was the CEO, uh, executive director, and he did a good job during his tenure. And abruptly, uh, Mr. Nelson retired, uh, you know, when I thought things were going pretty good at the Housing Authority, we were going in a pretty good direction. Um, and I've also worked with Ms. Annie M. Spell when she was on that board. I wasn't on the board at that time. But she has left a legacy, uh, in this community, throughout this community, enough to even have a community named after her. And, uh, Dr. Sharon A. Spell has always been right beside her, leading the way, uh, as far as in her footprint. And, uh, I really would like to see someone who's actually tied into the community as someone who can relate to the residents and have a pulse on the community as far as what residents need. And I know there's different phases of being on the board. And I think that with me leaving, that's a position that I left vacant. And with me leaving, I think they really need someone, not the management staff, but someone who actually could be resident-driven and caring about the residents and the future of, uh, affordable housing here in the city of Palaka. Uh, and I know Ms. Spell touch, still touch people daily in her life, uh, with her job that she does now. And, uh, here in the city of Palaka, and I think that, you know, I would recommend that she take that vacant position. And, uh, I know you make the recommendation, but that would be my reference to you right now, uh, in the board, to have Ms. Dr. Sharon Spell, uh, in that position.
I would second his, I would second, um, what Commissioner Jones has stated.
Okay, just before you do that, just based on, um, I, I, what I'll do is, I'll entertain Mr. Jones's motion, and I'll give my comments as well. Um, based on what we have in place, uh, the mayor makes a recommendation to the commission, and it has to be affirmed, and then the commission makes the selection choices based upon the recommendation to either go with it or, or to do something differently. Um, John Nelson is the guru of housing in this community. Um, John, John Nelson has been the CEO of, of, of the, of the Housing Authority. I sat on the selection committee, and I think we did a great job in bringing John there and putting him in place for fifty-four years. That's what he's done in his career. Where we are at this time is, we are looking for, we're looking for citizens to become engaged. We're looking for citizens, um, to, to really take over those spots. John's going to be there, I think. John, I consider both, uh, both, you know, both candidates to be friends. And I, I, I can, I, I highly respect both of them. Um, Dr. Spels is the Director of Transportation for the school district. But I, I am really excited about having new blood. I am, I'm excited about having someone who wants to come in and continue legacies and create sustainability, not just for a few years, but someone who's going to really be there. John Nelson's going to always be around Putnam County for as long as he lives. His heart's going to be here, and he's going to be the person that we call for housing advice. I'm not necessarily enthused about having two CEOs in the same room, um, sitting, one sitting on the board and one sitting, and one sitting in a leadership position. But I know that Mr. Nelson is a consummate professional and a committed individual to this community, will not stop working to improve housing, uh, within this community, affordable housing, and any other aspect, because he is just that type of person. And it's with hours and of laboring and deliberation that I'm going to recommend that Sharon Spels be, uh, the person who takes the seat of, uh, Commissioner Jones on the Housing Authority Board. And so now, at this time, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve. Well, if the John, well, Commissioner Jones made the motion already.
We'll take, we'll go ahead and, and Commissioner Jones, can you just restate your motion?
My motion is recommend that Dr. Sharon A. Spell is appointed to that Housing Authority Board as Commissioner.
I would second that again. It's on a motion on the floor by Commissioner Jones, a second by Commissioner Campbell to affirm my recommendation. Is there any further discussion?
Questions.
Questions called by Commissioner Borum. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. We want to thank both applicants, and this is exactly what we want in the city of Palaka, two very qualified applicants coming forward to do the work of the city. Uh, Mr. Nelson, in no way is this a slight to you. We think you have served this community very well, and we know you're going to continue to serve it. And it's hard for me to make a decision of this type, but we're going to move this community forward and continually make the St. John's, the gem of the St. John shine. So again, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Moving forward, direction from the commission as it relates to reopening, uh, Mr. Holmes.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, thank you. Mr. Mayor, uh, you know, uh, the commission has been steadfast in attempting to guard, uh, the community, uh, and impose safeguards, implement safeguards that will help in trying to stem the, uh, rate of infection of COVID nineteen. Um, we've basically not issued any special event permits during two thousand, well, during the latter part of two thousand twenty, I think, from February or March four, um, indicated that we would look at this on a renewed basis periodically and actually meeting to meeting after the new year. We did, uh, run a sort of a trial balloon with the state or regional Bass, uh, high school Bass tournament last weekend, I guess it was. Um, and we now have another event that's, uh, that's been one that has been quite a, a, I guess, boost for the city and the surrounding areas in past years, and that's the BASSS Elite Series Tournament, which is scheduled to be in Palaka December eleventh, I mean, February eleventh through the fourteenth.
Bass Master.
Bass Master, right, it's Bass Master Elite, BASSS. Um, the, I wanted to advise the commission that, uh, in conjunction with Mr. Cutright, uh, who's our, who, who, under whose department is the special event permit process, uh, we've spoken with Ms. Jones from the chamber and have had presented to us a, um, one of the most detailed safety plans that I've seen by any organization, um, outlining what BASSS intends to do in an attempt to safeguard the public and, and, uh, observe all guidelines that are observable, uh, or that are promulgated for attempting to avoid transmission. As Jones is on the line, I think that she's, I believe she is, I can't see her right now, but I believe she is. And I think, there I see her. And I think she also has someone from BAS available. But from my perspective, I will just tell you, and Mr. Cutright's here also, that, um, the plan in writing that they've submitted is, is not something that somebody drew on a napkin in fifteen minutes. It's, um, it's an eight, excuse me, Mr. Mayor, you know, I've got a little bit of a cough still from our little, my little COVID experience, but it's an eight-page document and includes such things as, um, limiting access to spectator area with their own imposed barriers. They've calculated the square footage of the spectator area, and when they allow for the social distancing setback of six feet, calculated the total number of people they could allow in that area. They've made provisions for attempting to limit the, um, contact of the fishermen themselves with staff and also objects that are being involved. Um, it's, it's a fairly detailed plan. Now, I realize you won't be able to control everything, and there will probably be spectators there that won't be in the spectator area. But if we're going to allow an event, I'll just tell you that this has accompanied with it their application, a, a pretty exhaustive plan for attempting to avoid, uh, creating a spreader event. Also, I will advise you that the chamber is altering their, uh, past, uh, practice by not holding any indoor activities at all. So everything will be outdoor. In the past, they've had a kids' zone at the River Center. They will not be doing that. Uh, they will not be doing aggressive marketing to attract visitors to the local area as they have in the past. And they're going to be asking everyone to, uh, follow CDC guidelines. The Bass Master Plan includes masking, um, of a recommendation of masking for everyone, um, and, and, and other safeguards. As I said, it's an eight-page plan that they've, they've set forth. So, um, with that having been said, I think Ms. Jones is on the line, uh, and I believe she may have someone from BASSS that, that may want to make a brief, uh, statement if, if, if the commission is willing.
Ms. Jones?
Thank you, and good evening, commissioners and Mayor Hill. We do have with us on the call today Ben Ashby. He is the operations manager for BASSS. And as Dawn has stated, they have a very exhaustive safety plan, and they have been implementing it at events throughout the pandemic, um, for their other elite events. I'm going to ask him to introduce himself, and if y'all have any questions, you'll have met us both, and we'll be happy to answer any questions anyone might have. Ben, are you with?
Yep. Thank you, Dana. Um, and thank you, Mayor. Thank you, commissioners, um, obviously, Commissioner Holmes, um, and all of you. Um, obviously, Bass Masters in Palaka goes back many, many years, and I've been at every single one of them. Um, it's our, one of our favorite locations in all of America to go. It's obviously, um, really strong, and I can, growth of our, our events have been, um, based on the work that a lot of the people in your community have done. Um, so we definitely, you know, are excited about coming back. Um, and, you know, this plan that we put forth, um, it's, it's our internal plan that we started last year. Um, you know, we started doing events starting in June of last year and was able to finish an entire schedule. Um, a lot of those events had, uh, live coverage on ESPN. Um, so, you know, if things didn't work, we made adjustments. And so this is a complete plan. We're fully, um, confident in the way it works. Obviously, Commissioner Holmes, um, kind of mentioned a lot of the, of the important bullet points, you know, keeping, you know, the staff members, the tournament anglers away from the public is big, especially as we're traveling into your communities. Um, and, uh, obviously, all the masking, you know, cleanliness, all of those provisions in there. Um, obviously, we are no longer with, I, maybe, many of you may have not heard, but we're no longer with ESPN. Think what we've signed even a better deal is we're going to be on Fox Sports One for every event this year. Um, and that will include live coverage. Um, we'll have six hours on the weekend of live coverage on Fox Sports One, um, plus obviously all of our regular bassmaster.com coverage.
How many anglers do you anticipate?
There'll be a hundred anglers.
Thank you. Any questions from the commission?
Yes, I have, I have one. If we have a hundred anglers, um, generally, how many, um, on, on average, generally, how many spectators do you normally have?
It, it all depends on, um, on locations, uh, different things like that. Um, obviously, this past year, we've kind of kept that to a minimum. Um, like has been mentioned before, you know, lower marketing, um, some of that thing. Um, so it's usually in the couple hundred range that we've had in spectators. And those anglers, they come in, obviously, in pre-fish Monday through the week, but we make a cut. So it's a hundred the first two days, and then we cut to fifty and then to top ten. So they're not even there the entire week.
Well, yeah, I, I really don't have a problem with the, you know, with the spectator section, but it's just make, well, with the, with the participants. But then just when you have people who come up and, um, that's the only, um, concern I have in terms of if we can have some form of, uh, spectator control, if at all possible, which I, I don't, I don't know if we can do that, but, um, but sound like you have a really, really good detailed plan. Um, we just like, I'd just like to hear from some of the other commissioners and the mayor. So, but, um.
Commissioner Borum, I got a chance to watch the weigh-in for the high school team. And, um, I can, I can tell you, we were, uh, when the high school teams came in, it was significantly more anglers than they have here. It was a seamless process. Um, you saw, it was, this thing was so, um, it was so methodical that you had virtually uh, no contact. As they did the weigh-ins, you basically had the way, you had them weigh in and they left. Each, each fisherman as they came in, they weighed in, they left, they were all separate. Um, you know, they remained in their boats until it was their time to come. And this, and it really was, um, it was something to watch in the way in which the protections were put in place. Um, we've, um, talked to people from various ages, from, from various organizations who were hosting fishing tournaments from New York to Palaka, and what we've seen. hosting fishing tournaments from New York to Palaca, and what we've seen is, this is a very, fishing is a very safe sport as it relates to social distancing and some of the things, you only got two people in the boats in most situations. But they've placed, they, they put safeguards in place that we never would have thought of, and I think that, you know, people like Mr. Ashby have done an excellent job in ensuring that we don't end up with the large crowds. There's significant controls in the way that they work this thing, and I, I was really pleased with what I saw last week. And I think it was, and, and the great part was the high school tournament allowed our young folks to come out to be able to, you know, to really do, to, to really do something positive they've been working on all year. It created revenue in the city for our local merchants, but the other thing was, it provided us with a baseline for reopening the community as a whole and finding methods that, that work as we try to find the new normal. And so that was what I was really excited about when I watched what took place, and then the chamber's done a great job, and I think that we're at a point where, as these vaccines start to come into the community, we've got to figure out how to get people back to a point where we generate revenues for our local merchants who've been hurting throughout this process and at the same time providing the safety that we've been, I think, extremely careful in putting forth throughout this community. And so I'm, I'm really, I was really excited because it gave us some, a, a new baseline.
Any other comments from the commission? Ms. Jones, I see your hand up. You're on your.
Thank you. I just wanted to add too that the hotels, as y'all know, have really been hurt tremendously through the last 10 months. The bed taxes are again are shifting downwards, 30% decreases from these times last year. So just want to tell you what a boost I think this will be to our hospitality industry, and I appreciate your consideration.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions, concerns? Seeing now you've got a recommendation to approve the special events permit per our city manager, is there a motion at this time?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Yes, second.
Motion by Commissioner Campbell, second by Commissioner McCaskill. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. And so, Mr. Holmes, I, I guess where we are at this point on the same item is, as we talk about reopening, I, I think the, it seems to be, I, I suggest that we find ourselves in a position where we work diligently with anyone. I, I was thinking about really the direction that we go in, and we've talked over and over about this, and we see numbers trending upward throughout our community, and I, we see where MLK was canceled and the Azalea Festival and things of that nature. And we know that it's too soon for category A events whatsoever. What, you know, but, but we've got to look at some of these other events that are coming forward, and I, I think if they provide for plans which are succinct in nature, which can provide the safety measures there, and I think we just, we're at a point where we look at these things and we take them on a case-by-case basis, I think at our, at our next meeting, we, we bring back some additional parameters for what, you know, for what we look at as we approve things, and we phase in and phase up as we get more vaccines in place and we gain more information as to COVID spiking forward. So when you talk about events like Porch Fest, for example, if they can provide for safety marks that put us in a position where we can say our citizens are going to be safe, then we can start to look at those events, give some input on what the safety checks are, and start to have some of those smaller events in place, that won't put our citizens at harm's way. And I think that's, you know, really kind of where we are, because we've got some local things in place that may only bring 50 people or it may bring 100 people, and, you know, we're talking 20 porches, for example. If we can have certain safeguards in place, I think we can start to look at some of those smaller events and see what we can do, and we just come back with a standard for category that allows us to have some safety, some safety marks in place.
Aside of what you said, Mayor, I totally agree. I would like for us to revisit, because I know prior to, Mr. Cutright had a very detailed plan as to the reopening of some things, so I would definitely want us to take this consideration, bringing back in facility rentals, because lately I've been at, been questioned a lot about that, so just bring that up to the table as well.
Yeah, I, I think that, I, I think that this commission needs to adopt Mr. Cutright's plan, provide that our staff has been having, been using their discretion, and they have been on a great job in, in getting certain things in place, and I, I think that when you look at that plan, it is, it's perfect for what we're doing.
Mayor, excuse me, Mr. Mayor, actually, it was my intent to take this plan that Bass submitted and without any shame, take some of the major components of this plan and submit them to the commission for consideration. One of the key ingredients of this plan is the limitation of access and the crowd control. Now, we're going to see how this works, and, and I understand that what's on paper and what happens in real life don't always work out the same, but, you know, they took the time to measure the spectator area, determine the total square footage, and then do the math to figure out how many people they could put in that area with a six-foot basic circle around them, and put up barriers, their planned cause for artificial barriers where they limit access to those number of people. That's kind of a distinction between anything we've had proposed to us in the past by way of raids and things like that.
Correct.
And so that was a big factor. Now, when we talk, start talking about opening up facilities, we can impose those sorts of lim, of limitations on, on the numbers that attend. So we're, we're going to put something together and bring back for the consideration of the commission for you to tweak or suggest modifications too, but we will, we will do that at the next meeting.
Okay. And then I think, and I think that, that will give us an opportunity, really, to look to actually incorporate that into what Mr. Cutright had with his 50% capacity. Commissioner Borum?
Yes, I thought we, I thought we voted on the facilities piece about a little over a month ago, about a month ago or so.
We, well, we talked, we, we talked about the 50% capacity being the standard for it, but we didn't, we didn't completely open it up for rentals.
Okay, okay.
And so if that's something that you're, if that's, well, actually, we could just wait for the two weeks and bring it back and do it all in totality, if that's what, is that what, if that's the commission's flavor?
That was, that was my request.
Yeah.
Okay, so what we'll do is we'll bring this back on the next agenda with the, with the amendments to Mr. Cutright's plan, so that the commission can go ahead and enact a standard which allows us to be able to start to create the new normal. And I think that's going to be good for the citizens as a whole, it's going to be good for the community, and it'll give us an additional two weeks to look at what the numbers are doing as we move forward, and it'll be, and, and like anything else, it'll be a fluid, it'll be a fluid document based upon what we're seeing as far as COVID numbers are as well, and what the, and if the governor implements any additional executive orders or anything that, which may be contrary. So we'll move forward with that. Again, thank you to everyone for your hard work. Thank you to Mr. Ashby and Ms. Jones for the work that you're doing as well as it relates to tourist development within this community. And now we will move forward with our city manager and administrative reports, Mr. Holmes.
Respectfully, I'm gonna decline to make many remarks tonight, and my voice is still a bit sketchy and my coughing is not all that pleasing to listen to, but I would like Mr. Griffith to bring something to your attention, to seal the phone.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Commissioners, Mayor, I just want to give a brief update on the waterline projects currently occurring in Palaca Heights. We are making good progress. I think they have installed to date about 7,000 linear feet on that project. They are getting ready to do the boring across State Road 20 at 13th Street and to begin on that side of the heights, working around on President and South 14th Street. Once we wrap that up, we will be moving up to the 16th Street, 17th Street, and St. John's Avenue area. We have an opportunity that I wanted to bring to your attention. This project didn't include the resurfacing of South 13th Street. However, as I'm sure you're probably all aware, that road is in need of resurfacing, and once we get done with the waterlines, it's an advantageous time to do it. I would like to propose, if you are in agreement, to bring back at a later date, maybe even later this month, a change order from the contractor to repair the curbing on South 13th Street from Carr South to Hank Bryan Park, and then resurface 13th Street and the crossroads to the railroad tracks, that is Carr, Laurel, and Oak, I believe. We have got a preliminary number from the contractor, the cross streets are in a range of 53,000, and 13th Street is in the range of 80,000. I did go back and look at a previous bid we received on some milling and resurfacing. The pricing is competitive, and I believe it's appropriate to recommend that change order to you. Do you have any questions or concerns?
Any questions?
Sir, I mean, I think the report is good, the verbal report, but do we have anything that you can give to us to kind of show the completion process? So if anybody have any questions, if we don't take all the notes down, we'll be able to kind of at least share that with the community, and so, you know, ask some major pluses and successes we're having.
Send, send out a whole, just send out a phase summary, and you sent out the entire phase, this, if you can, send out the entire phase summary of all that we've done thus far and where we're going with the next three phases, and, and shoot those numbers out so that everybody kind of be on the same page, and it'll be kind of a, some of it will be remedial, but the rest of it will be information that, that's going to be pertinent.
No, I would be more than happy to share those numbers, Mayor. We are fast approaching the 13-mile mark, and next year is going to be a big year if we continue to draw down the SRF funds as we've, as we've done this year. So I'll get a memo out as soon as I can, and Commissioner Borum, I can share with the commission the draft change order since it will most likely be on the agenda soon, so we can get that to you.
We've got, you've, you've got one other thing that you want to announce, and something that has to do with resiliency. Do you want to talk about that?
Yeah, it's becoming a common occurrence around here that Mandy keeps finding more money from the, from the state and the federal government, but we recently were notified, Mayor, I think you got notice of the article in, somewhere in Jacksonville. The Department of Economic Opportunity decided to award us $385,000 for what we termed a wastewater resiliency master plan. Simply put, that will be some smoke testing and TV-ing of lines to determine where all the inflow and infiltration is getting into your wastewater system, so we can reduce that number and increase our servicing capacity at our plant. So it's, uh, some positive news and happy to share it.
And increases water quality.
Mayor?
Yes, it does.
Yes, sir.
While, while we're on that, one thing, we have a, a lot of contractor work going on throughout the city, and right there at seven, South 18th Street, they were replacing a lot of the poles, and they got, some areas, they are damaging the, the concrete, the sidewalks or what have you. So I'm just saying, a lot of, we, we just want, don't want to make sure that the cit, our citizens have to pay.
We're going to send them a bill.
What's that?
We're going to send them a bill.
Okay.
Trust me.
I, I'll go ahead and, I'll get the exact locations and all, and then I'll get that to them, because the citizen brought it to my attention, and I asked them to go through the process and contact Jonathan or the city manager to report that. So if they have not done that, I will make sure I get that exact location.
Commissioner, we, we've got a good process in place for check and balance. If you or anyone in the public notices, notices something of that specifically with utility work, they can email or contact Public Works. We open a work order and we flag it for the agency. So if it's FP&L work, AT&amp;T work, and we have their contact information, we'll notify them. FP&L is, it's probably them or their contractor, they're doing a lot of what they term as hardening right now, and Mike Garmin is our contact again, and I, I will reach out to him, and he is quick to put those contractors on notice to resolve it. So thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. And the other, other piece to it too was the, the fact that whenever they went back in and they made the, I guess, the correction and improvement, my understanding was the, the, the sidewalk had sunk below, so it is creating a, a trip hazard or what have you. So I just wanted to at least kind of throw that out there, but I grabbed that information for you.
And if you can, if you got, if you got, if you got a picture of it too, it helps out a lot. And so if you also notice, Commissioner, if you get a chance, drive down South 14th Street and some of the other areas, and you'll see sidewalk replacement taking place as well.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Lot of things going on right now in the city. Again, thank you, Jonathan and Mandy, for the work that you do, and again, congratulations to everyone, $385,000 resiliency grant. So again, thank you, and just give them a round of applause. Ms. Becker, budget summary.
Good evening, how are you all?
We're fine.
It depends on what your report says.
Well, I, before I get started on the quarterly report, I wanted to address Commissioner Jones's question regarding the Hank Bryan Restrooms. During budget prep, we did put some money in Better Place to at least start that project. The goal was to seek a grant match for those expenditures. There's 15,000 in Better Place right now, and if we can get a grant match, then that would just increase the scope of the project. So just wanted you to know or be aware that is, that is on the radar.
Thank you, Ms. Becker.
You're welcome, sir. Moving on to the quarterly report, I cannot believe that the first quarter is already complete. The report in front of you, please note that the revenues for December posted after I pulled the report that you see, so you're only going to see revenues for October and November, however, you're going to see expenditures through December. Starting with general fund, we are on target as far as where I would like to see us in the first quarter. We do have COVID expenditures in there that were not budgeted. However, we have submitted a reimbursement to CARES that I believe is in a review stage through the county, so that's something to note in general fund. Moving on to airport, again, operate, if you remove the grants, kind of throw, any fund with grants will throw you off when it comes to percentages. If you remove the grant, operating is on target, personnel, operating, that sort of expenditures. There are a few insurance claims in your operating expense that you will see, or that is the summary of it, but that is included in that expenditure, expenditure that we're working through right now. Utility fund, we are heavy in grants and state revolving monies. I believe it's about $5.5 million in there for fiscal year 2021. Again, that will skew your percentages, but your operating is fine. As we all know, grant expenditures are typically reimbursed, so we typically won't see those revenues until towards the end of the year, if not even after the year is closed out. Golf fund, it's on pace, the expense reimbursements for operating expenditures are on pace, transfers in, you know, typically the largest expense in that fund right now is their debt, and that just hasn't happened yet, so you won't see that.
You scroll back down.
Sanitation fund, this, this fund is actually missing November and December's revenues. These are the checks that we get in from the Gas Authority as they collect our, or they do our billing for us, so we can kind of be late on those or see the, a late posting on those. If you remove, if, if you take the debt service out and you add your November revenue in, we are actually. Uh, if, if you take the debt service out and you um add your November revenue in, we are actually under an expenditure. So that fund's operating fine. The tax increment fund, um, we have invoice for the county portion of the TIF monies. Um, that's the, we should see those posted soon. Hopefully in January is when all the TIF monies come in. So um revenues, you don't see anything on there as of now. For downtown and south, the largest expense that is actually budgeted are transfers out. Um, and those are going to be your one-time grant ma, or one-time expenditures, which are grant matches. Uh, for capital projects in each respective district. So that probably won't happen until after the project is complete. Um, in better place, we have um. We are actually at thirty-three percent of revenues collected as of December. Um, and we collect all the way through um every month. This uh, this type of revenue doesn't just stop after we've received so many payments. We do collect in monthly for that. Um, and if you remove grants in this fund, operating or the capital operating expenditures are on target. And we have about six million dollars in grants budgeted um in this fund. And we also have the Public Works loan proceeds and uh debt service in this fund as well.
That's for the facility, right?
Yes, correct. Um, just something to note is that um, as these grants have been awarded here recently. Um, I guess since the budget was actually adopted, um, we will need to um submit an amendment to you all. Um, to include those in the budget so that we can get those projects and GL started and reflected.
Any questions from the commission? Seeing no questions, thank you, Ms. Becker, for your update.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Becker.
Thank you, Ms. Becker.
Mr. Holmes, you have anything else?
No, sir, I don't.
We have any, anything from our department hits?
Nothing from the fire department, sir.
Nothing from there, boss.
Nothing from the city attorney's office.
Chief Shaw's in my office. He said he has nothing either.
Well, you know, the community affairs department has something to say.
Community affairs.
All right, uh, we have a farm share next Wednesday and support it, be definitely highly recommended if you can come out there. It'd be uh from seven to twelve, but seven to nine is set up and we'll be at the uh, the Cavalry Church. Uh, Pastor Jay, again, we did it before and it was a great turnout. We did it before when it was election year. So we had a lot of participation, so please don't not come now since elections are all over. And then the end of the month, Ja, uh, January thirtieth, Powell and my, Powell and the Recreation Department has built a joint golf tournament. And we have a lot of teams signed up and we have had a couple sponsors. So if you can't play, donate. If you could donate and don't play, that's fine. But one of the two, I need to see you out there.
I want to play.
That's fine. Uh, we'll make, we'll make a commissioner team if, if y'all want to do that.
All of us may not be in shape, so I just may donate, okay, like Commissioner Borum.
And, and, and just for those who want to go to the Cavalry Family Life Center, it's fourteen fourteen Bronson Street, Palaca. And that time on Wednesday is what, Mr. Cutright?
Uh, the food giveaway will be from nine until we run out, but set up at seven to nine AM. Uh, from seven to nine AM and it's set up and get ready. Uh, we have, we'll start donating the food drive, the drive-through at nine AM. And we are running till we run out of food.
Okay, can you send the calendar invite out to the commission so that?
That's what I was asking, yeah.
I would do that. Uh, I've actually sent it out before, but I would definitely send it out again. And uh, we're going to be posting the flower on all our social media, so.
So send it out this time with some details. Thank you. Anything else, anything else from the commission? And Mr. Cutright, great job on the events.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Just a couple of quick shout outs. Um, Vice Mayor Brown celebrated her birthday last week. And Commissioner Borum celebrated her birthday yesterday.
Commissioner Bor, Commissioner Borum celebrated a birthday?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner, how old are you now? Eighty, sixty what? You're sixty what?
Sixty seconds.
Happy birthday, Commissioner.
And to Vice Mayor Brown, if you're out there in TV land looking.
I'm sure Ms. Brown is on Zoom somewhere or Facebook. So again, happy birthday to both of you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
If there are no further reports at this time, we're going to go to the commission. Uh, Commissioner Jones?
I defer. I don't have any comments this time, Mayor.
Commissioner McCaskill?
No comments tonight, Mayor, but again, I want to welcome Commissioner Jones to the commission. Thank you.
Commissioner Campbell?
Uh, again, welcoming Commissioner Jones and wishing the citizens of Palaca a happy new year.
Commissioner Borum?
All right, again, we want to welcome Commissioner Jones and he operated like a veteran, so.
Okay, I'll close this out today. And I, I, I want to share something personal uh with the community as a whole. Um. Over the holidays, I spent ten days in the hospital, uh, was in the hospital a day previously, um, dealing with COVID nineteen issues. Um, very scary situation um for anyone who's not had to deal with COVID nineteen. I can let you know, um, that is, it's for real. I hear all these folks who talk about fake news and it's just like the flu. It's not the flu. You know, I found myself in a situation where, you know, I was wondering if I was going to survive it. Not even knowing where I got it from because we tried to take all the precautions. But what I can tell you is this. Anyone, if you have symptoms, you know, let's not put it off. I, for me, I thought I had a sinus infection. And I thought maybe it was just my allergies that were, were acting up. And I delayed in getting to the doctor. But what I will tell you is, if you have any symptoms whatsoever. Go ahead and seek medical attention. Every minute could be your life. Every second could be your life. This thing is serious. It affects everyone. It's affected my family as a whole um during the summer. But what I want to tell everybody out there is, make sure you take the necessary precautions, social distancing, cleaning your hands. Washing your hands. But more than anything else, don't try to self diagnose. If you feel bad and you have sinus infections annually, get tested. If you have a headache and you feel as though you're not in, in a fever, get tested. It takes nothing for you to get tested. You go to the drive-in center, you get tested, go to your doctor, go to urgent care or wherever you need to go. But, but don't just try to self-medicate, don't just try to self diagnose. I isolated myself just because I was feeling different. And I found myself in a very difficult situation. So my advice to everyone here today, as these numbers go up, as we see wonderful citizens. Being lost on a regular basis to something that ain't the flu. And I know I said ain't, it ain't the flu. It's serious. There are lingering effects. We've got folks who are on oxygen, who were never on oxygen before. It attacks everyone differently. Take COVID seriously. If you got friends who are sick, get them to get medical attention. Because every moment that you waste. Could be a moment that could cost you your life. And so that's my message to everyone today. And we're going to continually pray that COVID leaves this community, this country, this world. And that we find ourselves back in a situation where we can be engaged. And so with that, I would intend the motion to adjourn.